I'm going to call the special town meeting for Dudley on February tenth, twenty twenty five. Took order. Sorry about the delay in getting us started. We needed to bring the colors in. So we have exceeded our core requirements, so we can proceed. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. So, Mrs. Smith, can I call you up to certify the delivery of the warrant, please?
Should either of the constables in the town of Dudley in said county greetings, in the name of the Constable of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Dudley, qualified to vote an election to town affairs, to meet in the Connie Van Coe Galley Auditorium at the Shepherd Hill Regional High School, sixty-eight Dudley Oxford Road in Sed Dudley on Monday, February tenth, and if needed, Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, at seven P M. Men and women take attention on following outlets.
Thank you. Can you certify the return?
We are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting a test of copies there.
We'll make sure the clickers work tonight, Doc. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Before we begin tonight, I've got some procedural reminders and decorum for our town meeting floor. Only residents of the town or agents speaking on behalf of the town in an official capacity will be permitted to speak tonight. This evening, we do have attorney Jeff Blake, town counsel, as well as Sean Healy from Weston and Sampson, who will be available to speak to any article questions related to legal or the project itself that's in question. As a reminder, there are no hats or hoods permitted in the auditorium, and all members of town meeting must be seated for the duration except when approaching the microphone to speak. In order to speak, please wait for recognition by me. Just raise your hand from where you're at, so that way I can move around the audience as effectively as possible. When you do approach the microphone, please fully state your name and address, so we can enter that into the record. Please be sure to refer to other speakers as the previous speaker. We aren't engaging one another by name. And if you have questions beyond just comments at the mic, please refer them to me, and then I'll determine who can best answer the question. During the proceedings tonight, please maintain appropriate decorum. We don't engage in back and forth. We don't cheer. We don't jeer. We vote with our clickers in the affirmative or in the opposition, and we accept the outcomes. I'll do my best to maintain the rules of Robert's order, as that's what governs our town meeting protocol beyond our town of Dudley bylaws. And if there are issues like we experienced with the flag or with the script, we just kind of roll with it. We should be pretty quick this evening with the business. Just a brief reminder, you all received clickers when you came in. We're going to go ahead and have a clicker tutorial for those of you who are new to us, to make sure that these work okay. Upon exiting this evening, you exit the same door you came in, the door farthest left, be sure that you leave the clicker with one of our assistants at the back door. First order of business before getting into the clicker tutorial, though, I'm just asking for unanimous consent to suspend typical rules of a ten-minute time limit on speakers per article and adopt a maximum of five minutes or two separate visits to the microphone per article. Is there anyone in opposition to that rule this evening? Fantastic. Through unanimous consent, we will suspend the ten-minute time rule. The clicker tutorial, if you notice upfront, this response card keypad will be utilized to answer yes to a question or no to a question. There are only two buttons that you have to work with. There are button number one for yes, button number two for no. And if you're, if you like, the alpha side of the alphanumeric, A for yes, B for no. If you push the wrong button, that's okay. You have until the timer for the vote to count down to change your vote. So if you mistakenly click one for yes, and you wanted to enter two for no, hit the two before the timer expires, and your vote will be recorded anew. If the red light is flashing on your button, as it should be now, because we're not accepting responses, just be patient. Don't continue to click. Give it a second break, and then tap the button again. You should see a green light to indicate that your vote was received up on stage. That's about it. Shall we do the trial run? All right. So again, a successful vote, a yes vote is one A, a no vote is two B. Again, if your vote's not registered, the red light will blink, and a no sign will show up in that response pad viewing screen. So the question is today, Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty-five. All in favor of agreement? No, it's today, Monday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Okay, there's our question. Is today Monday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, A for yes, B for no? Go ahead and enter your vote now. Notice the timer on the bottom right-hand side of the screen. And clearly, well, most of us know that today is not twenty twenty-three, which is okay. So without further ado, let's jump right on in. Article one, to see if the town will vote to hear and act on the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Appropriation Advisory Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
The FAA recommends you pass Article one as written in ISO.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move Article one to a vote. All in favor, one. All opposed, two. Thank you. Article one passes. Article two, it's an authorization to borrow to see if the town will vote to borrow the sum of three hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and zero cents, or other such sum, to purchase and maintain filtration equipment and other remedial measures to mitigate contaminated private wells within the Eagle Drive, Fairview Avenue, and surrounding neighborhood, including capped landfill testing, monitoring costs required by D E P regulations, including all costs incidental and/or related thereto. Such costs expected incurred in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and to meet such appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow such sum under inconsistent with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or any other source of authority, and to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for such purpose, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
The FAA recommends you pass Article two as written in ISO.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion for Article two. Yes? Yes, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I think Mr. Ruth. Yeah, could you just repeat the question?
George, um, I hope often said we have in drive on certain, uh, Paul Lane. So we just want to know how long the testing. So we want to know, you know, are we going to get excluded at some point or included?
Thanks for the question. On Circle Drive and Paul Lane, uh, we've determined that we've reached the extent. Uh, in accordance to the, the sample.
Okay. Um, is there any kind of a pollution policy from Gentex?
Of pollution? I have no.
Is this water from Gentex or from?
Um, so the contamination in the neighborhood has really been identified. Uh, or at least the D E P has identified two potentially responsible parties. One is the landfill, and the town. And the second is Gentex. So there's two responsible parts on the potentially. To perform the activities of performing, including sampling.
Have either of those, the town or Gentex, had a pollution liability claim filed against them? Would the legal counsel know?
Yeah, please.
I don't know of any legal claims that have been filed either against the town or Gentex. The only thing I'm aware of is the immediate response action remediation, mandatory remediation that D E P is.
So the D E P found this out?
D E P has a protocol that happens once we find there's some contamination, they start doing circles. And they get, when they get a hit, they start another circle, and then when they get another hit, they start another circle. So that's where we're at, and at least according to Mr. Healy, it looks like in some instances, they've exhausted those circles.
Okay. So the money is you're getting from the D E P. Are you going to go after the Gentex or the town for more money if this is going to cost more?
The money, I don't know what money you're speaking of.
Okay, the loans, where the?
The, where this money is going, it's not where it's coming from.
The engineers and those. They're a point of entry system. And to answer your question, Gentex.
That's correct. Both sides have D E P found both potentially responsible parties, and as a result, we are sharing the costs.
So if the rest of us that are left out because we don't have the testing, we can turn a lawsuit against Gentex potentially for pollution, if we get a non-testing evil, correct?
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
So all the testing is complete, that's the streets, correct?
I, I don't know that. I, I, I guess I'll defer. I didn't introduce myself last time, so Sean Healy, Weston Sampson. Uh, that sampling will continue, um, on an annual or semi-annual basis.
Okay, so.
The houses that we have a video system on. On a monthly basis to make sure that system, yeah, is operating effectively. And, um, some other, um, there were other ones that were sampled, uh, less than a month.
Is there a time spent in this?
Oh, many houses, um, will happen until there's a water line that's put in to the neighborhood, so that the town, that, so that the residents are no longer drinking water. They're getting water supplied from a water. Um, I don't have the water line plan. Um, it's definitely Fairview, uh, where you have here. And, um, yeah, I think that's generally it.
So when will the other streets?
That one would not be part of the overall. So that would be, I don't have an answer.
Okay, so.
Unless future testing indicates that there's. Um, Circle Drive and Paul Lane, no longer included.
Can I ask a what-if question? So what if in the end? Are we going to have to pay for our?
So the water filtration system is determined based on the load. Um, if you're above the drinking water standard, then the water filtration system. But, um, certainly if, you know, there's something in the future that we anticipate that the flume coming from the, these Gentex who are presumably coming from Gentex is impacting other areas, if that determination is made, then yes.
Great. Follow through that?
Yes, yes, yeah.
All right. All right. Thank you. You have to answer my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Yes?
Good evening. Tristan Mallett. I live on Paul Lane, five Paul Lane. Further questions? So I can understand. Um, so it says Eagle Drive and Fairview Avenue and surrounding neighborhood. So there are no others, I just want to clarify, there are no other streets that are in effect right now? I'm just trying to clarify what streets are being affected by this.
It's just Fairview and Eagle Drive and Paul Lane and Circle. That area up there is not.
So what other, what other streets are being affected other than?
Fairview and Eagle.
Okay, I was just clarifying because it says surrounding neighborhood, so I just.
Um, I believe that's it from my recollection.
Uh, is it possible for the public to get copies of the testing that's occurred, so that we have an idea? Are near our roads?
Yeah, so everybody who's had their house tested should be getting a notice with the sampling results within thirty days of the receipt from the laboratory. So if your house was tested, you should, you should, um, please let the town know if somebody's tested your house. Um, the reports then will, uh, be as their L S P and Weston Sampson. Our public information, um, they are on the D E P website. Um, when you get your notice from, uh, after the sampling is conducted, that shows you where you can go to get information relative to the sampling that's been done historically as well, all the way back to.
Um, I think to just kind of go off of what Gail asked, um, the future of testing, obviously, I have to imagine testing positive or bad tests lead to more testing. The cost of that further testing, uh, what does the town feel like? Well, I mean, I guess, I guess what my question is, how, how long do we want to continue this testing? And how do we follow up as a neighborhood to, to see what is happening with results directly, without just having to go to the D E P? Is there anything that our neighborhoods are receiving for notification that this is happening? Um, I just don't recall.
Yeah, so any testing that's done, you should, you should be receiving a letter within thirty days of getting the lab results. And it should be, and it'll tell you what the testing results are.
And there'll be no cost to any other surrounding neighborhoods in the future? If this were to creep up, you know, creep into our neighborhoods? Like, would this cost cover that, or will there be potentially further borrowing that needs to happen?
No, this cost is based on the radius that's been determined by sampling that's been performed, well, going all the way back to twenty twenty-one. We just kept expanding those radiuses until we got to levels that we either back. Um, if further the, the radius stops. And so we've, our radius has stopped, and we're sticking with the current radius we have for ongoing testing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Yes?
What happens if this is not passed?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Mr. Moderator. If, if. I mean, uh, the, I can't tell you. They can fine you twenty million dollars if we don't have the money to pay the consultants, don't have the money to pay the. Uh, filter media and, and changing.
Interesting. Okay, and just one last question. It says there concerning paying it back. Um, it says to issue any bonds. How will this be paid back?
Mr. Carmanini?
Good evening. Rich Carmanini, treasure collector. There is an interest component on it. Not to be evasive, when we borrow money on a short-term basis, it is a call to the banks to bid. Whatever the current interest rate is going to be, clearly, if we're borrowing ten or twenty million dollars for a longer period of time, it's going to be a lower rate. If we're borrowing three twelve, seven fifty, it's going to be a little, it's going to be further away from the ten-year note. It's going to be a little closer to a money market rate. Remember, we're borrowing at the tax exempt rates, whatever the difference is going to be. If I had to guess, we borrowed money for a police cruiser in September, just under five percent. I would imagine it's going to be very similar to that. I'm not going to try to predict it. If I, if I had to make a decision, it's going to be close to five? Matter of financing for the next couple of years. Back with excess revenue that comes in, we can structure it for a regular five-year loan. Does that answer it?
It does. Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? As this does involve borrowing the funds, please note that it does require a two-thirds vote. Oh, we had, oh, sorry.
Dave Dergan, sixty-eight Eagle Drive. This question is for Sean Healy. Why, uh, why do we stop testing Paul Lane? Isn't there supposed to be a five-hundred-foot bubble? Three Paul Lane had a detection of PFOS. Should there be a five-hundred-foot bubble going across the street there?
Yeah, Mr. Healy.
Uh, yes, so, so there's two outspeeds working on this. We've worked together. And concentrations that were detected. Very low concentrations and similar to background. Um, it was, we also determined that there was a potential hydro geological divide. Um, that I view either of you, the Paul Lane, Circle Drive.
Thank you.
And so, uh, based on that, we determined that we need to expand the radius into that area.
Additional questions or discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll move Article two to a vote. This does require a two-thirds majority. Uh, we can go ahead and open up the vote. All in favor, A or one. All opposed, B or two. Motion for Article two has failed. Article three, authorization to borrow to see if the town will vote to borrow the sum of two hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and zero cents, or other such sum to purchase and maintain filtration equipment and other remedial measures to mitigate contaminated private wells within the Eagle Drive, Fairview Avenue, and surrounding neighborhood, including capped landfill testing and monitoring costs required by D E P regulations, including all costs incidental or related thereto. Such costs expected to be incurred in the first half of fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And to meet such appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow such sum under inconsistent with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or any other source of authority, and to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for such purpose, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall? The FAA recommends you pass Article three as written in ISO. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion for Article three. Seeing none, we'll move Article three to a vote. This as well, it does require a two-thirds vote. Uh, all in favor, one. All opposed, two. Article three has failed. Article three has failed to reach the sixty-six percent. Article four, Board of Health, to see if the town will vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section two, to increase the number of elected members of the Dudley Board of Health from three members to five members. And further, to implement this vote, to place on the ballot at the twenty twenty-five annual town election two additional Board of Health physicians. One, one for a two-year term, and two, uh, one for a three-year term. And thereafter, all such physicians shall be elected for three-year terms or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor? The FAA defers to the Board of Health for making motion. Are there any members of the Board of Health present? Mr. Solomon?
Uh, non-member of the Board of Health, Steve Solomon, first, Mr. Moderator. The article where it says ballot at the twenty twenty-five annual town election, to change that to on the ballot and in the town. The reason why, if this were to pass, that we don't have tools from the Attorney General? If it passes, it doesn't get approved like here? Proceed with vote.
Thank you, I'll, I'll allow that, uh, just to move, um, considering it a script reserve. Um, when the article was created, it was meant to be put in place for all future years. So we can move forward with that. So that sentence we'll read, uh, picking up in the middle, to place on the ballot at and annual town election two additional Board of Health positions, et cetera.
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Board of Health, I ask for this motion to be passed.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded, discussion for Article four? Yes, sir?
Jim Jules Caljorgas, Francis Frye, but I, I have two questions. Number one. And second, um, what will the total cost be? Um, right now they're three members. One or two are available if you can. And the question about benefits is salary, they, they don't get a, or the, of people. So if, if it goes to five, three right now, then I can pay.
Thank you. Thank you, for a question, uh, additional questions or discussion for Article four? Seeing none, we'll move Article four to a vote, all in favor, A, all opposed, B. Uh, motion for Article four has passed. And that concludes this evening's business. Uh, is a special town, do you not like to name a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Move seconded, no need for a vote on that. It's unanimous. Uh, we return, please return your clickers on the way out. Do not take them.